Now, if we can have a roll call, please, Barbara.
Here.
Henning.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Merkel.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Bachman.
Here.
And Stevens.
I move to excuse Mayor Stevens tonight.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Henning and a second by Ms. Kelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we'll move to the clerk's report.
Okay. First, you have before you the council workshop work session minutes of May 16th, 2024.
There's any motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kelly, a second by Mr. Farmer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next motion carries.
And you also have before you the council meeting minutes of May 16th, 2024.
I will move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Henning, a second by Mr. Farmer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we'll move to old business, of which we have none, and then we will go to new business. And under new business, Martina, I think you're going to start us off tonight, right?
Actually, I thought Elaine was, because that's the...
I think they want to amend the...
Oh, you want to amend? You want to go ahead and amend now?
Yeah.
Sure. That's fine. So, basically, what you have is ordinance number 0062407 on your agenda under new business, as well as resolution 062434. Those are companion pieces of legislation that relate to placing the income tax on the November ballot. What I did was I prepared, after some additional looking into this, we prepared a separate ordinance and resolution. And the only difference between the old one, that is currently on the agenda, and the new one, is the addition of language with respect to the income tax credit, which says that the 100% tax credit restoration could only be reduced by a vote of the electors of Clayton. Therefore, the question becomes, does council want to vote to replace the current ordinance 062407 and resolution 062434 with the new 062409 ordinance and the new resolution 062442?
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion? I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You need four.
Yeah.
To amend the agenda.
And the motion was to amend?
The motion was to use the new...
Amend the agenda to switch the two ordinances and resolutions.
Yes, to switch to the new ordinances, right.
Okay, yeah.
Do it again?
I think you got four. Barbara's your rec...
We'll go back to new business again under ordinances. We have two ordinance or three ordinances. Barbara, if you'd read the first ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 0062406, an ordinance authorizing amendments to designation of job categories and pay schedules and declaring an emergency.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, or Acting Mayor and Council. So, I have in front of you the 2024 amended job categories and wage scales. As you remember, we've removed maintenance worker one from the wage categories because of the unionization of the service department. However, we, I forgot to put in the golf technician who was previously designated as a maintenance worker one. So, wanted to add that back in there. As well as due to our fire inspector vacancy, the pay scale was reevaluated and based on the job description, we needed to adjust that a little bit. So, that is proposed as well in front of you.
I just have one question. What does the golf technician do?
So, he supports the golf superintendent and also does anything that the course is needed. So, does handles chemicals to spray the golf course, as well as maintain anything to do with the greens.
Any other questions of Elaine?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Henning, a second by Mr. Merkel.
I'll move for emergency.
Second.
An emergency, she said. So, I'm changing it to an emergency motion.
All those in favor of the emergency?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Henning, a second by Ms. Kelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next motion carries.
Thank you.
Next ordinance, Barbara?
So, I read nine now, Martina?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 0062409, an ordinance approving amendments to chapter 183, income tax sections 183.012, 183.013, and 183.081 of the administrative code of the city of Clayton, Ohio, to provide for imposition of annual income tax rate of 2 and 1/2% per year on income and restoring a 100% credit for taxes paid by residents to other municipalities on such income on or after January 1st, 2026, when the city's income tax rate is increased to 2 and 1/2% for the purposes specified herein and declaring an emergency.
Do we have any questions? Anyone to speak on the motion? Amanda?
This is the topic that we had our work session on back way back on May 16th, and council made the decision that we would look at putting on, potentially putting on the ballot, an income tax increase where a half percent is dedicated solely to police and a half percent is dedicated solely to fire, and then restoring the income tax credit at 100%. And having language enshrined in the ballot language and in our code that says that the income tax credit cannot be reduced without the approval of the voters. That's what's before you this evening.
Are there any questions?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
You need the emergency language.
For the emergency.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the emergency. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Farmer?
No.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Bachman?
Yes.
I move for approval to ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Merkel, a second by Ms. Kelly. For the ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Oh, please?
No.
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Bachman?
Yes.
And we have one more ordinance?
It's ordinance number 0062408, an ordinance authorizing the submission, acceptance, acquisition, and purchase of specified parcels from Montgomery County, Ohio, for an amount not to exceed $15,000, and the subsequent disposition of same in connection with the expedited tax foreclosure program.
Kevin?
Evening. We've got about six parcels that we want to enter into the expedited foreclosure program. For those parcels to be, to qualify for participation, they have to be six months. Property tax must be in arrears, and it must be abandoned, so it's vacant land or an unoccupied structure. All six that we have are vacant lots, and you can see that they owe more taxes than the value of the land. Most of those taxes are us assessing for cutting the grass and the weeds numerous times. I mean, these are repeat fenders every year. So, what this expedited foreclosure program does is there's only two ways to stop once it goes into it. Is either you make payment and pay the taxes, so it's made whole, it's not a delinquent property then, or they enter into a payment plan, which eventually gets paid off. So, that's kind of the ultimate goal. If that doesn't happen, then we take possession, and we will maintain them, what we're doing now. But there is, I know some of the neighboring properties on some of these have interest in maybe taking over the maintenance of them, and we could look at working out of, you know, giving them the parcel or purchasing.
And just in case any of these residents are watching this meeting, which I think is unlikely, the addresses are 128 Talmage, 222 Osby Road, 7914 Melody Road, and three residential vacant lots on Pasemont Avenue with a delinquent tax of $185,000 total.
Right.
Kevin, is the $15,000 just cover these five lots, or does that put us in the system for future damage?
It's, we're talking with the county. They said that the cost is about $2,500 per lot, so that's what we've got budgeted in there.
And that will continue if we have other lots in the future than the $2,500, I mean?
Yeah, we'd come back and add those parcels and appropriate more monies for that.
And then whoever purchases the lots, once we obtain them, the delinquent taxes are wiped.
Correct.
So, the new owner doesn't have to pay them.
Correct. And I know that's a hindrance in one of the owners that's adjacent to the lot we've been cutting.
I...
You said that most of the delinquent taxes is from mowing grass and things like that, because the $320 or $32 times 20 doesn't equal $50,000, Kevin, by my math, anyway.
That'd be the Clayton share.
Well, that's multiple years they have not paid taxes. Sometimes paid taxes since...
Well, that's what I mean. It's 332 a year, and it's been 20 years, so...
$320 or 332 each time we cut it. We cut it multiple times a season.
And so, these are no tax payments?
And that's the annual taxes. It's 320, 330.
Yeah, for the parcels, yeah. The annual taxes, though, they haven't paid. But the delinquents, like the first one, they have $332 that they pay annually in taxes, but their delinquent taxes are $50,000, $55. And they have not made payments since 2005.
Yeah, so four of the properties have not made payments since 2005. One has not made payments since 2008. One has not made payments since 2011. And I guess my first thought is, if we were to do an assessment on other properties around the city, at what point do we maybe say after five years of not paying taxes, we try to do this? Why do we, like, why would we maybe wait 19 years? Because I don't think, if I would stop paying property taxes, I'd get 19 years.
Yeah. And it was this discussion I was having with our code enforcement officer. He's, you know, talking about the frequent customers we have, and so I started looking into there and looking at the, kind of talked to it with the county. So, I mean, it's something we can keep monitoring now, you know, going forward, that we know here's the requirements, and we can...
So, would we need, like, a resolution to say five years, or would you need direction from us, or?
It can just, I can just, you know, be policy, and I can just do it and bring it to you, because we still have to have approval from the council before we send it to the county.
Yeah, I think if they're going to have funding for us to do this, I would say personally, five years would be the max. That seems also high. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question, Kevin. There is mention in the language about that the parcels adjacent to these could take over the care. Have these part, have these landowners expressed an interest in purchasing these?
Said, I know of one, the one up on Talmage, they had looked at trying to, because that was actually part of the, when the land bank was, had it in their listing. But, like I said, you know, that one, they owed $50,000. So, it's like, it's just a little lot next to them. It was a house that was there, it burnt down, and no one's paid taxes since the house burnt down. So, they have talked to them. They would, you know, if they, if it was theirs, they will maintain, they'll cut it, you know, and then we won't have to be going back. So, that's where something we need to look at. Once, if it does, you know, if the guy pays his taxes, then we don't have to worry about it. But if he doesn't, then we can enter discussions with that homeowner and see how to transfer that. If there's any cost, you know, maybe recuperate what the fees we had for the county. But, yeah, there is, there are some, there are some interest in trying to get these.
And also, this cost, where does it, I'm new learning this stuff. Where does this come out of the budget? What's the category for it?
It's come out of the general fund.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I, if, I would move for approval of this, and I would ask that we do an assessment of all other properties within the city to see if anyone else is behind five years or more. I don't know if, Kevin said that doesn't have to be incorporated into the motion, but I'll move for approval of this motion that's on the agenda.
Don't we have to have another motion to put that on the next meeting's budget or agenda?
No, this is, this is the first reading. We'll just put it on the next.
Oh, this is the first, this is two readings, okay. Now, I just had one more question, Kevin. If, this is an expedited way that the county does it, how long would it take us if we did it? Excuse me, it's been 20 years on one lot already.
Yeah, we'd be going with Martina, and she'd be doing all the work for us to put, you know, trying to process that. I know, there was two other parcels that we looked at, but they had some other circumstances that said they did not qualify. So, even though they had delinquent taxes and it was abandoned, I think there was some kind of federal supersite lien on one, and there was a, maybe a payment plan or something with the others, so.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the resolution by Kenny Henning.
I'll second.
And a second by Brandon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for working on this.
Please read the next resolution, Barbara.
It's resolution R062442, a resolution authorizing and directing the Board of Elections of Montgomery County, Ohio, to conduct an election of the electors in the city of Clayton, Ohio, at the general election to be held on November 5th, 2024, on the question, shall ordinance number 06, excuse me, 0062409, adopted by the council of the city of Clayton, Ohio, providing on January 1st, 2026, for an additional 1% levy on income to a total rate of 2 and 1/2% and providing for the restoration of the 100% income tax credit be passed?
Amanda, ditto for what you said before?
Ditto for what I said before. It's the same. This is the companion piece of legislation for the previous piece.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Merkel, a second by Ms. Kelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Barbara?
Farmer?
No.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Bachman?
Yes.
Motion or resolution does carry. Next resolution, please, Barbara?
Resolution R062435, a resolution authorizing the use of ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, funds for specified projects.
These are the items that we discussed at the last meeting. This will spin down our ARPA fund balance and will actually, or will allow us to complete projects that we've had slated for a while without dipping into capital improvement funds.
Any questions?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution R062436, a resolution reappointing Helen Sunuuki as a member of the Parks Advisory Commission.
Is Helen here this evening?
I'll move for approval of the reappointment.
Second.
Was that you, Kenny? We have a motion by Mr. Henning, a second by Ms. Kelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Barbara, please?
Resolution R062437, a resolution reappointing Jackie McArdle as a member of the Parks Advisory Commission. Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Kelly, a second by Kenny, by Mr. Henning. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Barbara?
Resolution R062438, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an independent contractor agreement for professional, professional development plan and plat review services.
Amanda?
If you'll recall, several meetings ago, I had a discussion with city council about contracting with someone to do plan review for us for large developments that come in, similar to what we do with engineering, since we don't have that in-house. I have before you this evening, our former city planner has agreed to do those services for us. All of the expenses that are incurred for that are billed to the developer. They're not borne out by the city. So, I would request for, I would request council approve entering into that agreement.
I got a question. The language says that there is a need for this, and I'm wondering if there is an immediate need for this service now?
There is for the other, the developments that may come in. We don't have anything before planning commission currently, but, you know, we had a discussion with a developer this evening, and there's also been discussions with developer who wants to develop over, off of Westbrook Road. So, there is a need for this. I want to make sure that these plans are being reviewed in a timely manner and by someone who has that skill. And while Ellen is very smart and does a very good job with zoning on a day-to-day basis, this isn't her wheelhouse.
Yeah, Amanda, I have a question. The first line in the exhibit A says contact for developer, including contact name, company name, company address. We have a very large development in the city of Clayton where we approved it without knowing the company's name. And that was Caterpillar, I mean, 20 years ago, or however many years ago it's been. But, I mean, thank God, we approved it without knowing the name. But, what about Seth in that instance? Does he just go along with it?
He would still just go along with it. He would be reviewing the plans as they are submitted.
Any other questions?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Brendan, a second by Tina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Farmer?
No.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Bachman?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Barbara?
Resolution R062439, a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept proposal of and enter into an agreement with Superior Dental Care for the provision of group dental insurance benefits for the period September 1st, 2024, to August 31st, 2025.
Good evening again.
Elaine?
So, the city has worked with our insurance broker and obtained quotes to try to get the best rate for our dental insurance this upcoming benefit year. And we currently are with Superior Dental Care, and that's who we would request that we continue to go with, even though they weren't the lowest bid, they weren't the highest. And at the 5%, it would only be an increase of 20, about $2,500, but it would allow for employees to be able to obtain their same dental and have no disruptions.
So, the 20...
I assume that the employees are happy with Superior Dental?
Yes, I have not heard otherwise.
I was just going to ask, thank you, Mr. Gorman. I was going to say, the $2,300 increase is not a cost that will be divided by employees, it's to the city?
That is correct.
Okay, so...
Yeah. Because right now, the city pays employee dental 100%. They do cost share the 80/20 for the medical benefits.
Any questions of Elaine?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Merkel, a second by Ms. Kelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Barbara?
Resolution R062440, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Stryker Medical Emergency Care for the purchase of two cardiac heart monitors at a cost of $112,000, I'm sorry, $112,403.4 cents.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, tonight, we're on, before you're requesting the purchase of two heart monitors, cardiac heart monitors. The current ones are 15 years old. Usually, they are replaced every 10 to 12 years. So, we had these in the CIP for about three and a half years now. But, the current ones we use, the new versions were coming out. They were in testing, well, then COVID hit, so they were in testing a lot longer than we thought they were going to be. But, we did not want to spend this kind of money on old technology either. So, we waited till they came out. They just got released in June, and with all the new technology, and we will be the first ones in Montgomery County to have these monitors. So, they're the newest and greatest, but the ones we do have are currently, need to be replaced. Like I said, they're 15 years old. But, this was in the CIP, and now we're going to use ARPA funding to pay for those, so we're not even going to pull it out of our CIP.
I'll move to approve.
Second, and I pray we don't have to use them too often.
I just have a question. Didn't we just approve these on the second resolution?
Well, you approved the expenditure of the ARPA funds. This is for the actual purchase.
They were listed on the, what about the other three things? We don't have to approve them?
They're all below the bid threshold.
Okay. Let's see. Ryan, you made the motion, and Kenny, second. We have a motion by Mr. Farmer, a second by Mr. Henning. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution R...
Thank you, Brian.
Oh, I got another one, sir. I always ask for money.
All right. Resolution R062441, a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase one power cot from Stryker Medical Emergency Care at a total cost of $33,709.07.
Again, another item that was in our CIP that we're going to use ARPA funding for is a power cot. The current one is 10 years old. We had two power cots, but since we're enjoined with the collaborative, we only are required to maintain one, so we only have to replace one. When you look at how often we use these power cots, obviously, the, these cots were purchased through the BWC grant, so we don't have to lift people anymore or anything like that, so it prevents injuries. And, you know, over that 10-year lifespan, just to put in perspective how much we use it, we use them about 80,000 times to go up and down. So, so when they last 10 years, that's pretty good for us. But, so, it's time to be replaced, and since we had some ARPA funding, we wanted to get those replaced and not use our CIP funding to do so.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Henning, a second by Mr. Farmer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Adder's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a few items for you this morning, or this evening, I'm sorry. We'll start with a hot topic from, I know. We'll start with a hot topic from this morning, which is trash collection. So, the city council did approve a few months back, moving from Republic to Rumkey for the trash bid for the next five years. We're excited about that. That begins July 1. Since that time, Republic has been woefully late on their trash pickup. The city, I think, we fielded, I don't know, at least 20 calls a day, if not more. Yeah, see, Barb's telling me what, if not more, and probably exchange 10 to 15 emails every single day with Republic. I talked to Law Director Dylan today about sending them a letter, just so it's public record, about the lack of service that the city has been receiving and our residents have been receiving since we made the decision to move from Republic to Rumkey. Along with that, Republic made the decision to go ahead and send out bills for July, August, and September. If residents have received those bills, they should not pay them unless they have back due accounts. Those should be paid. Any bills due in arrears should be paid. Anything moving forward should not be paid. So, I wanted to make council aware that I am working with Law Director Dylan to send them a letter, and they have to be aware that city managers do talk, and that city council members do talk to other city council members, and that the service provided has been seriously lacking.
Question on that. I have it emailed to me. I'm sure a lot of people do as well. That came a couple days ago. If people did pay, will that, do you know, will that get refunded?
They have told us that they would be refunding anybody who has paid. They also tell us they'll pick up the trash. So, I mean, it's something that we'll, we'll have to really watch. We'll have to...
I mean, not everyone, maybe especially some older residents, use social media, but I think we need to put that on the Facebook page.
We did. Elaine did that.
Or if you, we could, like, maybe do it a couple times, too?
Absolutely, yeah. So, she, she put it out, and I think you put it on Nextdoor, all of the social media sites, and it's on our city website. So, it's there, and then if residents have questions, they can always call. I mean, I think Barb and Lindsay have become experts in trash collection at this point.
Amanda, I just think that when we're talking about the bad service, that's since we decided to go with the competition.
Yes, it's since...
Up until that point, the service was fine. We don't want to...
No, we had, we had some issues with them even prior to that, that we had worked through. Our Friday route, which is the Western route, was frequently missed, and we were frequently having to call them and tell them that they had to come out, back out and pick up. It was one of the reasons, not only did Rumkey come in with the lower bid, I think we're going to get better service.
And we start that on July 1?
July 1. So, Rumkey has already started staging and delivering some carts to residents, and Republic has been picking up the recycled totes since this is the last week for the recycling. And then they're going to come back and pick up the trash totes in the last week of pickup. We do have an agreement between Rumkey and Republic and the city that if, for some reason, Republic decides that they're no longer going to pick up their own totes, that Rumkey will collect the Republic totes and deliver their own.
So, totes can be picked up at...
Rumkey will deliver the totes to the residents, to their home. Everyone should have received a flyer in the mail from Rumkey explaining the process. And the flyer is also available on the city's website as well. And the flyer is also available on the city's website as well.
Amanda, just obviously, this is all getting documented for future reference when contract-
It absolutely is.
Time comes back up.
Absolutely.
Before you go on, in the past, at the close of the year, what has been, the emergency ordinances have been placed, as far as bills for unpaid trash collections and that sort of thing. Can we get, will you get accounting for those outstanding bills that are still owed to Republic with the closing of the contracts?
Yes, we can do that. So, the way the contract is currently set up with Republic, after three-quarters goes by, the city actually pays the bad debt, and then it becomes the city's debt, and the city then assesses. So, Republic is made whole. It's the city then that is, who is then left and alleged to collect from the resident or person who-
I'm just saying, there's a line drawn, so we know where that line is at, as far as what-
Oh, I understand what you're saying, from the number-
So, something doesn't get added after this closing date, that inadvertently shows up as being an extra charge somewhere?
Yes, we can do that. Just a reminder that the dugout painting at Hardscrabble is June 29th at 9:00 a.m., and I don't know if Earl's here, I didn't mean to steal his thunder if he is. He can always elaborate on that. And then the all-inclusive parks will be, at Northview Park, will be closed June 24th, 25th, and 26th. The playground surface is being resurfaced, it's being sealed. So, it will be closed then, but then will be open after, we did it then, so it won't be closed over the Fourth of July weekend, or Fourth of July holiday. There was a cyber breach with the city of Cleveland. CCA does our, does our tax collection. CCA was not affected by the breach, so no tax information was leaked. We do still have, before council, an adult-use recreational cannabis and what council would like to do with that. The moratorium is in place until September. If council wants to allow one or all, if you're talking about retail cultivation or processing, that will have to go through the planning commission process, so I need direction from council on what you would like to do, so we can begin that process, so we can have something in place by September. If they just want to outright ban it, you can just say, we want to do that, we could bring legislation, and then, it doesn't have to go through the process, it's just a ban. But if you do want to allow something similar to what we allow for medical use, I will need direction, so we can get that process started.
Has anything come out of Columbus yet?
No, I haven't received anything.
Because that'd be nice to know where that's going before we actually try to do anything.
I agree, yeah.
Do they have to be approved by the state, like the medical ones do?
They do, there's a licensing process through the state.
Isn't there a deadline for that?
So, Martina, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the last I heard, they were supposed to start looking at licensing June 7th. Whether or not that actually happened, I don't, I don't know. There's a moratorium in place in the city of Clayton, so it wouldn't have mattered here, whether it was June 7th or not.
Council have any opinions on what Amanda is asking?
What are your thoughts?
Well, I think we ought to have some kind of control over it, yes.
And, and that's fine, it-
Or we could do like everybody South and just say no.
And just say no. And that's council's prerogative, if that's what you want to do. I mean, currently, we allow the cultivation, I have the use table here, I put it in the-
We're north of town, though, Amanda.
We are, we are, that's what we do up here, right? So, you can have dispensaries in the Main Street District, in the Commercial Mixed-Use District, and the Commerce Manufacturing and Industry, CMI District, those are permitted. And then medical marijuana processing is permitted in the Main Street District, which we currently have. It's also permitted in Commercial and the Commerce. And then marijuana cultivation is permitted only in the Commercial Mixed-Use and Manufacturing. Now, we don't, all we have is processing at this time, we don't have any of the others. But if council wanted to look at something like those restrictions that we have for medical, for recreational, we can do that, or if council wants to just ban it outright, or look at one and not the other, that's fine. I just need direction.
I'd like to look at restrictions.
Yeah, I mean, I personally would be in favor of not having shops that sell it on Main Street, personally. You know, we had a discussion earlier today of a potential for a whole bunch of rental properties going in on the northern, or northern side of the city, right off Main Street. Rentals and recreational marijuana aren't two things that I'm very keen on for the city's direction.
Greg, do you have anything?
Well, I think we have to have some, some say as far as how things are placed. I'd like, like I said before, I want to see what's coming out of the state in terms of what their potential guidelines might be, as far as anything we might have that might, might be in conflict.
I mean, one of the other options, if we run up against the September deadline and the state still hasn't issued anything, we can extend the moratorium another three months or however long council sees fit.
I'm fine with, with doing that, keeping the moratorium, just, I mean, we can take that off at any point that we want to there, and even though it has to go through the planning commission process here, it's not something that necessarily has to be, you know, speedy right away. So, me personally, I'm, I'm fine with just keeping the moratorium here, because then that gives us till September.
The State House is probably ready to go on summer break anyway, isn't it? So, they won't pass it till September. Anything else, Amanda?
I have a few more items for you this evening. So, the City of Union has been presented with a proposal from a developer to develop land on Phillipsburg Union Road. The conceptual plan that was provided to the city from the City of Union shows 54 homes on 18.327 acres of land bordered by Old Mill to the west and Phillipsburg Union to the south. Their planning commission made the recommendation to, for council to hold a public hearing, that is on June 24th. There's been no request from the City of Union or that developer for access to Phillipsburg Union Road to the right-of-way that the city of Clayton controls. Staff recommends that the access to Phillipsburg Union Road not be withheld at this time. The documents that were provided by the City of Union are attached to your packet. I am looking for direction from city council. If you want, I can issue a letter to the City of Union telling them that they cannot have access to the right-of-way. I will tell you, though, that we do have a good relationship with the City of Union when it comes to development, they are willing to provide water, we have an agreement with them for them to provide water, basically, anything north of 40. We also share services for road plowing in that area.
But will this just conflict, or make the issues with the surface water and everything that we had on the, the platte at the corner of Haber and, and Phillipsburg Union, although it's, surface water was a problem then, and this is just gonna, one of the reasons that it was not approved was because of the surface water?
So, what I'll tell you is, that is the process for the City of Union to work out. It is their zoning process, it is their decision. At this point, the only thing that the city of Clayton has to weigh in on is whether or not to allow access to the right-of-way.
If I understood you right this morning, or this afternoon, you said that we don't have to do anything definite with Union, right, at this point in time?
We do not.
Because they haven't seen the plans or anything else?
No, they have not requested that at all.
So, we're, do we have to tell them anything?
We, we do not, we don't have to tell them anything at this time. This is just something that I knew that was coming down the pike, and thought I would bring it to council, so you have an opportunity to think about what you want the city to do.
Amanda, if I could make an observation with the graphic you showed, that the entire section of Phillipsburg Union Road that borders that property is not Clayton. If you look at the bottom left of the graphic that was provided, about 120 feet north of Shaw Road is Union. Plenty of road space to create an entrance to whatever they want to do on that property. While Union does provide water, they also provide water through runoff, and certainly creating some big problems with residents, our Clayton residents along Old Mill Road. So, I've just, those are just a couple observations I'd like to share. Thanks.
Another problem I have with the platte layout is that there's one way in and one way out. For, for, I forget how many lots you said, Amanda, I know it's on here, but-
54 is what Union provided.
54 lots, and I know that doesn't bother Brendan, Brian like it bothers me, but if that happens to be closed, then, you know, you can burn all those houses down before anybody get to them. Anything else, Amanda?
Just one more. If you'll recall, way back in September of '22, staff discussed with city council the possibility of lowering the speeds on certain roads within the city of Clayton. In the update I sent to you via email last week, I provided a link to that work session for your review. The speed studies have been completed, and the, we sent those up to ODOT for review, and they sent us back basically approval, not approvals, but saying that, yes, we can go ahead and move forward with this process if your council so should choose. So, at the July 20th, 2024 meeting, we will have legislation for you to reduce speeds. One of the roads that we are looking at reducing is Westbrook Road with the development that is going on there, and the issues that we have had at Hope and Westbrook with people cresting that hill and accidents that happen there. The city of Trotwood, I have talked to their city manager, and they are on board also with lowering that speed limit. He will present legislation at his council on the same day, or at their, their July meeting, not the same day.
We're not gonna fool North Main Street, though.
We are gonna fool North Main Street.
You didn't say it, you just said-
I was just bringing up the one that we had to have cooperation from the adjoining city. It's Westbrook Road. And that is all I have for you this evening.
Any questions of the city manager?
This is a convo for the city manager and city law director, and I wanted to talk public records requests, please. When citizens request a public record, is that record then also public?
Yes.
Okay. And can you discuss, Martina, a little bit about text message retention, email retention, what is applicable for public records requests, et cetera, just for any residents we have that may be interested in learning?
You mean, like, length of time, or?
Yeah, length of time. What would be approved, what isn't? Some of the state law that I sent you compared to what you cited?
So, for texts and emails and things like that, you really have to look at the city's record retention schedule, because each department has a separate record retention schedule, and it separates it out by correspondence, emails, et cetera, et cetera, contracts, legislation. They all have varying periods of required lengths of time to retain them, so I'd have to refer to that, because that's several pages long, to see which specific-
What would council's retention schedule be, then?
Oh, I'd have to look at the, I need to look at the retention schedule, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me, but I need to look at the retention schedule to see what that is.
So, should we have got that schedule before being sent a public records request, or not? A resident made a public records request, we weren't sent a schedule that said, you may or may not have to do this, we were just told, you have to fulfill this?
No, I can send a schedule, it's fine.
So, what I would interject, so, a resident made a public records request for text messages, when those text messages or whatever council then provides to the administration is then reviewed by the law director, and she would make sure that everything that is being released is actually a public record, that it has to pertain to city business, that it's not just banter between two people, and that it falls within the time period stated on the RC2, is the retention schedule.
Thank you. That's all I have. And then, actually, one more thing. Are, are city emails kept, what's the, we don't know the retention schedule off the top of your head for city emails?
I don't, but it's, my guess is that, without looking at it directly, that it's based on content, on, on what it's, what the email contains.
Okay.
So, if you were to send me an email and just say, hey, I can attend the chamber breakfast, the retention on that is probably pretty low. But if you send me an email, you know, asking, I don't know, about a development or requesting legislation, that retention is going to be longer.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for the city manager?
Amanda, I had earlier communication with you about North Clayton Development.
Yes.
And the question of Windsor's responsibility is in terms of the commercial building, and I don't know if you had shared that information with others or not down here, but last Friday at the grand opening of the salon, the question was raised about responsibility of the, of the landlord, in this case, Windsor Development, and the tenant of the building as far as, or the HOA, who has responsibility for exterior maintenance upkeep of the grounds around the building. From the standpoint that you have a, a new, new operation, new, new business coming into the location, and the first impression you have upon walking up to the front door is this overgrowth of weeds in the, in the front bedded area, and the question that was asked by persons there was, who's responsible? And so, I asked the city manager to, was it HOA responsibility, or is it the property owner responsibility to maintain things from the standpoint of, you want, you're trying to get something that's a good quality development, you got weeds that stand two foot tall?
It is the property owner's responsibility. I have been in contact with the HOA president, and she is going to work with the property owner to have the beds cleaned up. They are required to maintain that.
I know there's some other issues that kind of came up in a conversation I had with people, and, but I, again, I think that tenants should be addressing those with the HOA to channel things the right direction or back to the city. So, I mean, I'm sure there'd be some other issues that might come up.
I'm, I'm sure there will be. I did provide, and I'm sure that the HOA president already had this contact information, but did provide the contact information for the tenant that's in that building, so they have a direct communication.
Anything else for the city manager? Okay, then we'll move to visitors' comments. Does anybody have anything they'd like to speak to us tonight about?
That's up to you, I mean, if you just want to ask people if they want to speak, if you want to go through the list, you can do that as well.
I just did that, didn't I? Would anyone like to?
I live at 306 Rankin Drive in Inglewood. I'm here to talk about the proposed development. One of the things Matt said was, the water runs north. I can give you a survey from Montgomery County Soil and Water, that 16 acres of that property runs directly into my daughter and son-in-law's house and the two neighbors on each side. Clayton was kind enough to help us out, to get the rural perks to sell us an acre of property, so we could run a swale through, so the water comes to the back acre of the property, runs through that swale, and then runs north and goes under Main Street at the Yellow Church that's right on Main, and it's, it's a real mess. And you guys are talking about water everywhere else, it does not run north. The water does not run north. And like I said, I'd be happy to furnish that to you. You guys were so helpful to us, nobody else was gonna do a doggone thing, and the rural perks, you convinced them to sell us an acre. Then we had Jim Lot come in, cut in a big swale. There have been times that swale has been wall-to-wall, right up to the top. And the other thing I'd like to say is, those are awful small lots. If you compare them to the lots that are on Rankin Drive, you've got two lots compared to one lot on Rankin. I, I just don't think that's what's coming in there is what we really want. And my daughter and son-in-law live at 303, so they're right up against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to us tonight?
This development, this development to me sounds like deja vu all over again after this keep-it-rural situation we had to go through. I live on Old Mill Road, and I've experienced runoff problems from Iron Gate. I've been there 49 years, been flooded many times. How did Union get access to the drainage in Old Pig Eye Creek? I've never heard anybody explain that. In this new development, my driveway is 110 foot below, the road, the road across in front of the new development. The road, the road across in front of the new development, Phillipsburg Union. Okay, here we go. And the creek is probably another 30, 40 foot below that. So water does run north and runs where else? Oh, in Inglewood, okay. I misrepresented the area again, okay. And the traffic on that road when Main Street is blocked is ridiculous. They're tearing up yards and berm and everything else. And the trash problems we've had, both from those traveling the road and trash coming down the creek, where the years has been ridiculous. I've been up and down that road with a trash bag many times, picking up things. So I don't see how anybody gains from this kind of a development. It's going to be, it's going to have to be less than a quarter acre per lot to fit that area. And no matter where the access route is, what's going to keep people from, there's going to be what, 100 more cars at least? From when they want to go north, they shortcut down Old Mill. And it's just not made for traffic. Very few places you can pass each other. So is more comment going to be needed later in the following sessions or?
That will come up at another point in time, right Amanda? The right away?
And you, yes, it will.
Okay. That's all I have for now then. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come up?
Good evening, Rose Plummer, 11415 Old Mill Road. So I'll be brief. I believe the lot sizes here with this, what was talked about tonight are even smaller than Hunter's Path and was proposed for Union. I believe the smallest Union lot size is .1764. I believe the smallest here is smaller than that. And then to beat the dead horse on the water. So we get water from Union that starts over at Lindeman Commons, flows through West Martindale Platt and then picks up water there in Iron Gate where they have the underground springs underneath the homes. So then it feeds through the spillway under Phillipsburg Union through a no-name creek till it gets to Pig Eye Creek. So, you know, we have water there. Additionally, with the Union development, we're concerned about water coming back our way and into our front yards along Old Mill there. And it's tough because there's no ditches. There's, you know, it's just a, just a problem and you heard it ad nauseam last year as well. And then additionally, the concern that you had, Tim, about the second access to that Union development, the only place that could really go right now is onto Old Mill Road. And at best, at its widest part, that's a one and a half length road until you get to the switchback. So anyway, that's all I had to share tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jack Brissette and I own a parcel off Old Mill Road. And I don't know if I can call myself a hobby farmer or what. I do not have a residence, but I own a parcel there with my son. I just want to kind of piggyback on the water issue. The development that is due east of my property, there is a future road access that borders Clayton and the Union Township Road. The southeast corner of my property, when it rains, it's swampy. So any other water that could be coming downhill toward Pig Eye Creek is deeply concerning for me. Like I said, this is how me and my son, we recreate, try to sell a little bit, but we, there is some issues here. And I just want to make sure we're seeing the big picture. Stuff flows downhill. And if that means it's going north, it's going north or toward Pig Eye Creek, just like that. We get tractors stuck, four-wheelers, whatever we got to get machinery in, machinery out. It's pretty swampy. And I get it, the big picture, you know, taxes drive money, right? However, I think we got to be concerned about everybody else, just not that one portion of 20 acres with a million houses on it. So there's a little bit more to this than what we think. But I appreciate you listening to me. I say with the utmost respect, thank you.
Thank you. Is Earl back there? Wait, wait, we, Mr. Plumber, I think I wanted to say come up first, Earl.
Thanks for the mystery. Joe Plumber, 11415 Old Mill Road. Hope council remembers that a few months back, the voters of Clayton voted against developing north of 40. So this is north of 40. And I know it's zoned for residential, but the voters didn't want development north of 40. Then back on our Old Mill, then Phillipsburg Union where Union wants to go build the plat, I don't think we should allow the access into the plat. They can go further east to Shaw Road where they can always have a four-way stop there when traffic gets bad or light. Where if they come out on Phillipsburg Union, you're just going to have one way or the other traffic. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nope.
Gloria von Fonestock, 10831 Putnam. And I'm short. Couple of questions. On the expenditures that we approved for the two things for the fire department, what were the other things that were, you said it was below the threshold? Do you, can you tell us what the other things were?
Bear with me.
Stormwater, stormwater project at Hoken Townage, ADA ramps and guardrails on Reinhardt Road.
Okay, thank you.
Mine says, mine says Reinhardt.
Okay, thank you. And when the Union had their meeting for the new development there, that, the access, single access was asked at that time. And if you look at the map, as I recall, there was a road leading north and I specifically asked them, are you intending to take that road leading north to go into another plot somewhere? And kind of threw the developer off and he didn't know and he said no. And I don't know if anybody else is here that can remember we asking that question. So the question is what happens if we don't allow them access to Phillipsburg Union, they're kind of, kind of stuck. They're going to have to figure out something else. Anyway, so that, I just wanted to give those two things back and to the gentleman who gave the thing tonight, I noticed that you used the pictures of D.B. Horton as your examples. Is D.B. Horton the one who is building these or are you building these?
No, there would be two builders.
Okay, so I asked him at the meeting, did they have any of the projects going on in our whole area? And his answer was no. So that means he told me a falsehood.
Well, we don't have an agreement.
Okay, but I asked him, did he have anything in the works and he said no, correct?
Well, he might not have, yeah, he might not have.
Okay, well, noted. Okay. Last thing. I've just, the question that Mr. Hennings had poked in, a question in my mind, what are some of the legitimate reasons that a person can make a request for public records? I mean, any willy-nilly thing that you want to ask or is there legitimate legal?
You don't have to have a reason.
Pardon?
You do not have to have a reason.
So there's not like, it doesn't matter what it's for, you know? If you just want to ask anything, you can ask anything?
You can, I guess I'm trying to figure out what you mean by anything. I mean, you can ask for the public records, you can ask for emails, contracts, you know? If you give us some direction as to what you're looking for, then we can, you know, try to find the records you're looking for. But I interpret your question is like, do you have to have a reason to be able to present the request? No, you don't have to have a reason to be able to present the request.
So if we wanted to know anything that goes on in council, like the way I interpreted what you just said was that if you got, talked amongst yourselves about anything that we as citizens can ask you to give us access to whatever it is you said?
If it documents the functions of the city, if it's related to city business. For example, if it's an email between two council members about going to see a movie, that wouldn't document city business.
And how do you guys keep track of that then? Do you, you're not allowed to erase any of yours? Do you have?
It's according to the records retention schedule how long you have to keep it.
So on their phones, how do they do it on their phones? Is it their private phone or do they have a government phone or?
As far as I know, there aren't government phones.
There are no phones issued to any employees or to council members. So if, for both council and for staff, it is stressed that city business should be done on city emails, should not be personal emails. So there's no chance of, if you are, if you're emailing your husband and saying, hey, let's see a movie, that that's not going to pop up in a public record. Same with text messages, that text messages really should be kept to a minimum. I will tell you, you could make a request for it right now. There is a chat between all of the council members and Martina and myself. So if we send an email that needs to be looked at directly, we'll shoot an email to that group and say, hey, you need to look at this. You need to go do your email and look at your email. Both that text message and the email are both public record. So if a council member or if a resident were to make a request and say, Amanda, I want all of the text messages that you have with Mr. Hennings that relate to city business, I would have to go through all my text messages, screenshot them and then send them to Martina for review and then they would go to the resident.
That's insane.
Don't ask Martina her age though, okay?
I mean, that's seriously insane. That's why I wondered why, if you had to have a legitimate reason to do that. So somebody could really like be a jerk and try and ask a lot of questions and keep you guys tied up for a long time. That's crazy. Okay, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Earl, you've been standing there. Well, you want, okay, we'll get him next.
Jerry Black, thanks for hearing us. 114, no, 11736 Old Mill Road and 11744 Old Mill Road. I'm not rich. We are very concerned about water runoff from the 17 acres. Iron Gate has made a worse situation for Pig Eye Creek. We also have a residence that's Union with Clayton Road, 11416. And it's, it's a lot wetter as it stands and you wouldn't think it is because we're pretty far away from Pig Eye Creek. But you know, the area there is very shallow. So the aquifer is very shallow and when you build 54 houses on a 17 acre plot, you've got street runoff, you've got roof runoff. And I really don't think that they're going to be able to put a retention pond in and make that good. I'm very doubtful that that's going to happen. Also, I was hoping that I could ask a favor of the city manager that you would contact Mr. Applegate and tell him that council has not approved access, just so that he knows that and that maybe they can plan accordingly. And I would ask that council would, would not allow them access just because we're not going to lose water. We have an agreement with them. Yeah, we have a good working relationship, but they're not going to cut off water just because you won't give them access right in front of Union or Clayton residents. So thank you for your time and I appreciate your listening.
Thank you. Okay, Earl.
Earl Harlibert, 6420 Lebon Court. I'm your perks director and Saturday we are painting. We're going to paint four dugouts, concession stand. I talked to Randy, he's going to have all pressure washed, ready to go. And Lane will be there, 8:30. We're going to start at nine. We'll have all the rollers out, all the paint brushes out. We're going to get into high motion and we'll be done, hopefully, we're going to try to be done by noon. We do have some water coming, so we need water. So if you're coming to paint, please bring some water with you. Make sure you have coverings so you don't get paint all over yourself and anything like that. This next Saturday. 29th, I'm sorry, 29th. What am I doing? I've been working on my pool all day, so. The 29th, we're going to end up painting, like I say, painting four dugouts and the concession stand, all white with blue trim, not Northmont trim, blue trim. And we'll, like I say, we're going to start at nine o'clock. I've been contacted by the church on the way down there. They're going to send four to five people, which is going to help us. We have a list of people we're going to be calling to let them know what time we're going to start. Everything will be there, ready to go. Like I say, Randy gave me his approval and then Lane will be there with me and we'll get you, we'll get it all started. We'll send groups, certain group up here to do this, another group to that, another group here, we'll just break you up. And we'll get it all done. And all I can say is paint, baby, paint. And we'll be all done hopefully by noon. If we have enough people, we'll be done by noon, so. And if anybody would like to come and put your old clothes on and use your paint brush, please come. Thank you.
Thank you, Earl. Would anyone else? Okay.
I'm not sure if this is a justified comment or not. My name is Barb Franz. I live at 427 Rankin Drive. So the new development is right next to our property and right behind our property. We've been very blessed to be in this home for 18 years and love the country view, knowing eventually someday that land could be sold. My concern is, I know right next to our property is where I think they're saying green space. I'd love to know what they mean by green space because it's all grown up right now with bush because it was too much water there for the farmers to plant. We used to have a nice lake with ducks until it all grew up. But I guess I'm just very concerned with the size of the lots, how close they're going to be coming to the back of our property. You know, are we going to have to be looking to, we have a lot of young children. Our husband and I are the oldest that are in that neighborhood. There's a lot of young families that have moved into, on Rankin at that end with young children because of the fact that it was a dead end and their children are very safe. I mean, you know, they're, and I'm concerned about rental properties. What kind of people are going to be renting that property? Are we going to have to worry about our own safety, not only of ourselves, but our children? And I, it's just a comment I wanted to make. I don't know that there's any answer to that other than I would love to know what they're talking about, green space right next to the, right at the southwest corner. So maybe I could talk to you afterwards, so. Thank you.
Zach Bond, 209 Old Salem Road. I just had a question on how you guys were figuring the tax increase and why we are focusing more on taxing our residents that live and work in the city. And it's, the entire tax increase is going to be basically handled by the citizens that live here and work here instead of it being spread out more and still keeping a tax credit of 50% and doing something more like going to 2% and each, each, both people that live here and work here and people that work outside the city can share the cost instead of it all being on one. So that's one question I had on how that was figured. But then also, if we need the tax increase, it seems like we're avoiding tax-based increases. I mean, whether it's voting down developments, and I'm not saying we don't need, you know, that there aren't bad things about some of where the developments are going, but we've got to have more people coming in, a higher tax base. And we're talking about getting rid of, or not having rentals. And there's nothing inherently wrong with rentals. It's all going to be dependent on prices and it's the same way with houses. I mean, the price is going to be the big thing. I mean, we're not going to have drug dealers in thousand, you know, in $4,000 apartments. But if we want high-end houses and stuff like that, we have to have. But if we want high-end houses and stuff like that, we have to have better city services, keep our city services up. And I mean, the main way we can do that is by increasing tax base. We're talking about getting rid of, or not having marijuana businesses, whether it's even just the dispensaries. I mean, there's nothing inherently wrong. But why, it just seems like we're kind of avoiding things that would increase the tax base, which is what we need. So I guess, Kevin, is there, was there any kind of study done on, I guess, how much the tax increase is going to be shared between people that live in the city and live outside the city? Or work outside the city, sorry?
That's why we're trying to get rid of the 50% credit because that's really people that work outside the city that live in the city. They're being, paying 0.75% more on top of they work in Dayton, they're paying two and a half, but.
Yeah, but if they live in Dayton, they pay two and a half.
Kevin, can you speak up a little bit so that the people in the room can hear you?
And one thing I don't think a lot of people realize is like somebody that works in Dayton paying two and a half, we didn't get none of that income tax. Dayton keeps it all, so we don't get anything. So we do have businesses here that people that work at the business don't live in Clayton. That's why we're trying to say, okay, we raised it, you put the income tax on that like Caterpillar, you know? So we're getting, getting two and a half percent from them to help with our roads, police and fire. I don't know if, I don't know if we could differentiate between those, you know, the different tax rate for those living and live and work in Clayton versus those that live in Clayton but work outside. I've never seen that in this state.
But wouldn't having something that was more like 2% and splitting and keeping the current credit and sharing the cost instead of now we're kind of hitting the people that work in the city, which we're trying to attract businesses, and we're going to have a higher tax rate on them? But also, the people that live and work in the city are also getting hit with a higher tax, but the people who are living in the city but working outside the city are essentially paying no tax to our city?
No, if they work in the city, they're paying.
Sorry, live in the city and work outside the city, sorry.
So, yeah, well.
Because they pay everything to the other cities.
If it's, yeah, two and a half percent, yeah. I mean, yeah, there's, I mean, it's not going to.
Because most of them are higher. Most of the surrounding ones are higher.
It's going to benefit some, it's not going to benefit some. And yeah, so we've had that discussions during our workshops, you know, how do you, it's a tax, how do you make it fair? You try, you know, but yeah.
I was just wondering, yeah, curious how it was figured that that was the way to go instead of just a slight increase to.
You know, that we kept hearing that people, you know, they want the 100% credit back, so that's why.
Kevin, I think there's something you might want to discuss after the meeting then.
Yeah.
Would anyone else like to speak?
My name is Nate Hughes, live at 404 Beach Grove Drive in Inglewood. My concern is on this new development. So my property, Dead End Road on Chris, my property is the corner of Chris and Beach Grove Drive. You can see the homes on Rankin from some of these other people that have talked. My issue is obviously stormwater. I think that's been pounded into everybody's heads. But stormwater is one thing. If you walk that field, which I have multiple times, trying to find where all the mosquitoes are coming from that are in our neighborhood, it's standing water all through there. And they're saying they want to maintain all current vegetation and trees. All that needs to be brought up or drained, and there's no good way to do that. The other concern I have is with the schools. I assume this will be Northmont School District?
It will be.
Okay. Has anybody looked into school population and what the school can handle?
We have, we've talked to the school district multiple times with other developments and they have told us they can handle new students.
Okay, because I do know we just closed Inglewood Elementary, obviously. And in the past, Northmont has handled them getting new schools by closing one and then saying, oh, we're overpopulated just to get an emergency levy passed. That's been the past. But that was another concern that I had. Is there any particular reason why we want to put 555 units in that area?
This is something that's been brought to the city. It's not been approved or anything else or exactly what's going to happen there yet. Nothing.
We're here and I'm just asking the question, why, why that number?
Nobody said to anybody up here or the staff of the city or anything else wants that number. This is what the developer is suggesting for that plot.
Okay.
Or for that partial of land, excuse me.
Okay, so following that up, why, why are we cramming all these houses on top of each other? And obviously, we're talking about tax revenue.
There again, the answer is the same.
I know, I know.
That's, that's.
But these are, these are my concerns. You're cramming 555 units into one place. And you, obviously, you guys need the tax revenue. Everybody around here is hurting. Everybody knows taxes suck, but cities have to have them operate. If you guys want to bring in tax revenue and maintain the standard of living that everybody has, double or triple the size of these lots and build high-quality homes, not rental properties and houses stacked on top of each other that are snapped together in three months or less. And Fisher Homes is known for that. Their turnaround time is three to six months. Now, the other concern that I have is the pricing on these proposed homes. Your price points are above the average of all surrounding areas at the bottom end. So who can afford these homes?
It's not been approved or anything else.
I'm aware it's not been approved, but these are all questions that need to be answered before.
We don't have anything to do with price points.
These are all, these all need to be answered before this is even gone forward with. So what, me asking, what is your guys' plan moving forward? Are you going to negotiate? Is this going to be something that is dead set, we're developing it? Or is this a, we're talking about developing it?
We are, we are, we as a council are not.
Correct.
So even your statement of us approving 555 homes, that's not what we, we didn't approve anything tonight.
Right, I understand that.
So I think the next.
The question of the 555 homes, why the numbers, a lot of these things are to the builder. And also things that I want you guys to keep in mind moving forward as you're looking at these plans.
I think we need to have another conversation now as a body, now that we have, because this was my first time seeing this tonight, so.
I just saw it about three hours ago.
Yeah, we're in the same boat. So we, as a body, now have to discuss.
Okay.
Not by email or text messages.
And it does sound like a lot of you guys are on the same page as far as bringing in rental properties and the things that come with rental properties. And the proposal with, we want to bring in these lower-end homes in this section to be bought to rent, that I don't, I don't think that's the right move for any of the surrounding areas. So that's what I have for tonight.
Thank you, sir. See anybody else, so?
I'm Mark Schnicky, 874 Miami Ridge Drive, Loveland, Ohio. A lot of things that we heard tonight, you know, we take all this into consideration. We plan for all this. Couple of things that we look at, we want to create something that works for the city, works for, helps us with taxes. Also, there is a serious need for housing. The idea of what we have with four different product types is we can, we can hit, we can, we can target four different homeowner types, you know? The rental aspect of it, these homes are going to be $250,000. They're not going to be, you know, Section 8 housing. I envision us getting a whole bunch of military that would possibly live here that are going to be transferring in and out of the right path. These people are also, so many young kids, my kids in particular, can't afford to buy a house. This gives them an opportunity to buy a house, whether it's. The other thing is, old people like myself, the paired patio, it's a fully maintained property, one-floor living, two-car garage, fits my lifestyle perfect. I lock my door, go to Florida. I don't go to Florida, I don't really like Florida, but Colorado. So it's another, another product type of homeowner that would be, do really well in Clayton, Ohio. Then we also have Mabel Street being first move up, then you go to the $400,000 is the second move up, you know, so we kind of cover all the bases. And when someone mentioned, who can afford these? A lot of people. We're doing this all over Cincinnati. And Fisher feels very strongly that this can work in this neighborhood. If, you know, these guys are the, one of the top 30 largest builders in the country. They've done their research. They know Clayton, they know Northmont Schools. They feel this is a high priority area for them. This property is zoned for similar to what we're trying to do. We're just trying, and we'll work with the council to get something that works great for everybody. The other thing we heard is stormwater. Montgomery County is not going to let us do anything that's not going to protect the stormwater. You know, there's plenty of regulations, Ohio EPA, Corps of Engineers, Montgomery County, the City of Clayton will probably have their plans examiner. And we're going to make sure that the runoff doesn't go out any faster than it is now. That's, you know, even if we didn't want to do that, it would not be allowed. So that's kind of the whole gist of what we're trying to do. And we, we understand change is challenging at times. But I do think this area needs more housing. They obviously need more tax revenue, like everyone needs more tax revenue. Everything's more expensive than it ever used to be. So I mean, that's, that's a big part of what's going to happen here that I think would be a real benefit to Clayton, Ohio, as it is. And we're on a project very similar to this in Batavia, Ohio. It's a village of, Village of Batavia, and they really wanted to grow their population and get, you know, they were, they were struggling revenue-wise, and now their property taxes, their property taxes, but more importantly, their income tax is doing so much better. And it's something that's needed. And then we can keep the rest of it rural in Clayton. I don't really want to develop in that area.
Okay, we thank you.
All right.
Can we ask you a question? What's the, what's?
No, wait, wait. We're not.
You can ask me later.
Dean, you two can talk. Move on to council comments.
Good evening, everybody. I'm really pleased to see the turnout we had tonight. I hope you got out of the meeting what you wanted to regarding the development, got the information you needed. I think especially the folks from Union who came out. I think it's important we build a good relationship, even if we're going to deny access on roads, that we try to get along and we're all in this together. I'm going to be out there, Earl, painting dugouts with you. So like I said, I'm working on my skills, usually with a weed ear. But yeah, I'll be out there to help out with that. Just additional with Old Mill, probably most of you know, I live on Old Mill. It's a chip and dust road, not built for a lot of traffic. I'm concerned on edges of it as well, it's unstable. One and a half car is wide. Could tell you some stories, but I'm just, that's just an observation. Let's see, and I'm, I wanted to read something to you because I was a man on an island tonight, voting against the levy. And probably some of you are wondering, why are you doing that? So I just want to read something to you so you can get my insights. I really struggled on that. That was, I sat on that on the fence, you know, I'm chafed from sitting on the fence for weeks on that. But eventually had to, got it put from residents, and I'm representing Ward 1. So my vote was to represent Ward 1. So let me read what I've got here. How to vote on the tax levy going on the ballot has been one of the more difficult decisions I've had in voting so far. At first glance, this might seem like a no-brainer, but like other issues, taking the time to think through the, the presentation and measure made me take pause on its meaning and statement. At first glance, who's, who's, let's see what? At first glance, who is going to vote against police and fire, especially when the voting language could come across as additional to what they get already? But it won't be additional to what they get already, it will be additional to the overall tax percentage. And bringing that percentage on what the expected revenue is to be leads me to think that we are already providing that level to police and fire and that amount of funding. And for that case, there may be a case where we aren't, one may not require as much, so what is going to happen to that additional money that has to go to them under this obligation? Unfortunately, the thought and understanding of these numbers came after our work session. So lesson learned, I'll crunch numbers harder next time before our work sessions, where we were presented numbers and options and asked to craft language in one session. And now we had to do it as an emergency. Additional month lead time with two shorter work sessions probably would have allowed us for a better understanding of the meaning and implications of the proposed options. Staff and council doing this, working together, would certainly result in the whole being greater than the sum of the parts. In the wake of two no votes, the levy approach seems to be how to make the requests different without explicit explanation of what we will lose without the levy. But I will tell you this, police and fire will get what they need, period. The question really is, anything that's not police and fire, will they get what they need? In my opinion, we need to set up a Plan B showing the city's plans if this does not pass. And if we have it, I haven't seen it. Having such a plan would reduce the uncertainty of our city's future on ground loss without a tax increase and a path ahead for gains if it passes. So I implore city staff to consider this approach as I believe it will give the city the greatest chance to gain the trust of our residents to approve a city tax increase. Without this Plan B, Ward 1 does not really have an incentive to change its position. Last November, Ward 1 voted 63% no. In March, it voted 57.8 no. And I will respect those two election results. And, and so I'm, that's why I voted to not put on the ballot this time. But if we do see this plan, I'm certainly open to changing on behalf of the ward. That's all I've got, thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. Kenny?
Thank you. First, I wanted to say thank you to Kevin and staff for working to do the work that's needed to get rid of the vacant lots with 19-plus years of delinquent taxes. I think that should be definitely a priority moving forward. Next, I wanted to add something in regards to what I said during the city manager report, which is, in regards to public records, of course, I'm always for transparency in government. It's so important. You, as residents, would expect that from us, that we're honest, we have integrity, et cetera. This role that we have up here is public service. We make 300 and some dollars a month. It's public service. And recently, we've been asked to search for records that describe information that's only of interest to the requister. And the requister once stated on April 4th during a city meeting that he was hopeful that staff and council would work better together and, actually, let me read his exact wording. This isn't how we're going to get things done. It's never how we get things done in Clayton. We should work well together, et cetera, et cetera. Let's stop the politics, let's get into some good government, and let's figure out how to right a ship. Well, I believe us as a body have, we've righted a ship, if you will. We've, we've made the ship go in the right direction the past couple of meetings. We've been working very well as a body. And then one individual continues to do public records requests, especially on a holiday, when Martina is reaching out to staff who is off, but then has to come in the next day to deal with it, only because they want information that they may try to do something with in regards to a whole bunch of nothing. Because I can tell you on the text thread that we had amongst us, many of us said we had no records of what was asked. And it was just a personal vendetta to see what someone could get for no apparent reason. It's really sad. The individual who stated they wanted good government said the City of Clayton was at risk of losing good employees. Well, would you want to work in an environment when you have an individual requesting ridiculous public records requests nonstop? I would probably say not. So I would urge all of you tonight to ask yourselves, you know, is this government, are you proud of what is up here? And if not, do a public records request and see what you may be able to find and dig up. But to do it in a way. But to do it in a way that makes us all not want to work well together is just absolutely mind-blowing. I mean, we have been working so well, and then to make us go backwards after you've asked for the ship to be corrected, it blows my mind. So it's very disappointing. I had to do this on a holiday when city staff was off, center nothing, and I did it while I was on vacation during the last request, and I'm sure I'll continue to do it as these come in. But just because you do a public records request doesn't mean you're going to find something. And I would urge Martina to see if we are obligated to create records by searching for information that doesn't exist. So thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. Thank you, Kenny. Now we'll go to Brendan.
Evening, everyone. We switched around. Did you want to speak?
No, no. I just wanted to make sure that Greg had his opportunity.
Now we'll go to Brendan.
Evening, everyone. Lots been said tonight. Obviously, this was an initial proposal. We've had, you know, a lot of these where, you know, even ones that, you know, move forward, you know, there was definitely adjustments that were made on. So, you know, we'll see, you know, when we see any future information on this. I hate this. Okay. Yeah. Only things I had, you know, it's been five weeks since our last meeting, so, you know, obviously a lot going on. Would like to mention, you know, the passing of Councilman Merkel's father happened during that time period, so, you know, Greg, again, I think, you know, we all can express our condolences, you know? Only, you know, hadn't really gotten a chance to truly meet your dad and know him. Sadly, it was at your mother's funeral there, the only other time that I knew him. But I don't think it's, you know, an understatement to say that the man lived definitely a full life. And a lot of people, you know, kind of one of those, the last of the old-school druggist of things, and talking to, you know, other people about, you know, how you go in and it was the candy and the pipe tobacco and, you know, just the smell of the place and the friendly nature of your parents and things like that. So, you know, that... Definitely see, you know, a lot of that in you. You know, obviously, one of your sisters is able to make it out. But, you know, like I said, lived a great, long life. So, yep. And only thing I have is, here in a couple of weeks, is the anniversary of the greatest text... Breakup text ever sent out, and happy Independence Day, you tyrants.
Thank you, Brendan. Tina?
I did it. Your father, he was a legend. He ran the most tight ship pharmacy I've ever seen in my life. He was efficient. Your family was known for that. I appreciate all the time that I spent in that pharmacy with my parents. And my deepest condolences. Also, Metabrik. We had the opportunity amongst council members and staff, go to the 100th year celebration, and it was a very nice celebration, I thank staff and council members to watch. That was an amazing event for the 100th year. Otherwise, happy 4th of July. That's all I have.
Thank you, Tina. Greg?
All right. Well, first, as far as the development presentation was given this evening, the one thing to keep in mind is it was a conceptual idea as far as what could be placed there. There's no definite plan to put 509 houses or 559 houses or anything else. It's a conceptual idea as a starting point for discussion. So it's still, if it gets considered, it has to go before planning, and the planning board has to make approval before it comes back to council for our discussion. So it's a long process yet to go before anything is decided. As far as the property there on Philsburg Union Road, let's see what's going to... See what happens as far as what the city of Union proposes as far as the development. I mean, you know, groundwater's always been an issue, and it's a matter of trying to figure out, you know, Union has to fix their problem before they can do anything. And that what Union's problem is, is not Clayton's problem directly, but Clayton has some say in terms of also having some water issues downstream that Union will have to address. So really, I mean, it's... Let's see where that's going before we actually start jumping the gun and trying to stop something before anything happens, because Union may stop it. So, you know, let's see where it's going to go. The other comment is that, yes, since the last meeting, my life has changed dramatically. My dad did pass away back on May 19th at the age of 95, and he had a good, hard life, and at the end, he was struggling and basically said he wanted out. And I did my best. But I want to thank the city for your support and the comments and the words of support that were given, the cards that were sent. Thank you. I had persons who from the city basically, you know, stopped at the house and offered condolences and assistance in anything that I might have needed. So it was nice to know that the city staff, when the chips were down and I was having a hard time, that they were there to help support me. So when I said in the past about my support for the city and the employees that work here, I stand by it. I will fight to do whatever I can to support the city and the staff. And anyone who wishes to challenge me on that, we're in for a fight.
Thank you, Greg. I have nothing tonight except to wish everybody a happy 4th of July. And with that, we don't have any executive session, do we?
I'll take your ear, Earl. I'll move for adjournment.
We have a motion by Mr. Hennig and a second by Mr. Farmer to adjourn all those in favor.
Aye.
There better not be anybody says no. Thank you.